Good evening. Welcome to the Candidate Forum for Benjamin School District 25. My name is Barb Lyman, a member of the League of Women Voters of Wheaton, and your moderator for this evening. I do live in West Chicago, so I will not be voting for any of the candidates participating in the forum this evening. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates or parties for any office. The League is not affiliated with any political party. The League's purpose is to promote civic responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens in government and civil civic discourse. Providing opportunities to meet candidates is a major mission of the League of Women Voters, so voters can become better informed about the issues facing their community and to become better acquainted with the candidates running for office. We are looking forward to a respectful exchange focused on the issues. We all benefit from a civil exchange of ideas rather than personal attacks. Our goal for the forum is that it will inform and inspire rather than divide. We do hope that the candidates will speak about their goals and plans and refrain from speaking about another candidate or what another candidate has or has not done. All candidates on the ballot were invited. Participating in tonight's forum for Benjamin School District 25 are Dennis Peterson, Eric Rogers, and Donald Suttenbach. The format for tonight is a forum and not a debate. Candidates are expected to accurately represent the facts, and their responses reflect their own views and opinions. All candidates attending tonight have signed and returned the ground rules by the deadline established in the invitation. The rules specify the format, time limits, broadcasting of the forum, and other rules related to the conduct of the forum. The candidates will begin in alphabetical order by position with their one-minute opening statements. They will then alternate the order in which they answer questions for one minute. After the question portion of the forum, each candidate will give a one-minute closing statement, continuing our alternating pattern. A member of the League will serve as timer, and I will enforce the time limits. Candidates, you will see a paddle to let you know when you have 30 seconds, and then 15 seconds, and then stop. Should a candidate exceed the time limit, I will ask them to finish their sentence and move on to the next candidate. To ensure that questions for tonight's forum represents a balance of topics, a panel of experienced members of the League of Women Voters have reviewed the questions submitted for appropriateness and to avoid duplication. For those in the audience, if you do have a question for the candidates, please raise your hand, and a volunteer will come by and give you a card and submit the question to me once it's been reviewed. We are grateful to those in the community who take the time to learn about the candidates by casting their vote, by attending or watching a candidate forum. For those in attendance this evening, we ask that you listen attentively, turn off your phones and electronic devices, avoid commenting or disrupting others during the forum, and refrain from applause until the end of the forum. Finally, I want to say how appreciative we are of the candidates, who are not only willing to serve in office, but who agreed to be here tonight to share their goals and ideas. So let us get started. Candidate Peterson, you have one minute for your opening statement.
Thank you for inviting us here tonight. And I have to admit, I've been on the board for over 40 years, and this is the first time I'm in this kind of a forum. Which may seem strange, but many times we run uncontested, and therefore the need for this type of a forum is not necessary. But part of my qualifications are the fact that I have been on the board for more than 40 years, and so I have a pretty historical view of the district going back to 1983, when Benjamin District was 350 children. And it grew to almost 1,100 somewhere in the 1990s, early 2000s, and then now it's drifted back towards 700. I've been involved with five superintendent searches, so I think since we're in the...
Candidate Rogers, your one-minute opening statement.
It goes quick. Well, I just want to thank you for inviting us, and you know, I'm just really excited for Benjamin District 25. We have a lot of changes that are taking place, and there's five excellent candidates that are running for these positions. So you know, Benjamin is in great hands. I'm running for the board. This is my reelection. I've been on for four years. I've served in schools for more than 15 years, so I currently serve as the Director of Finance and Operations at a district around this size. So I manage all the financial activity, buildings and grounds, food service, transportation. So I've really got intimate knowledge of how school districts operate. And I joined the board four years ago as the only candidate that had children in the district. So I just thought it was important to have representation from that point of view. And so I really joined the board to help serve all the students of Benjamin, be more involved and active in the community, and just really use some of my experience to help, you know, progress Benjamin and continue its trajectory of excellence.
Thank you. Candidate Suttenbach, you have your one-minute opening statement.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And again, let me echo the other candidates' comments on thank you for this forum, because without this forum, I don't think the voters will have a chance to know us as candidates. So I'll start by saying I've lived in Carroll Stream for 45 years, same house. I lived near Evergreen. I was married for 40 years, and my wife passed away five years ago, just before the pandemic. And my daughter's a graduate of Benjamin District, and now my granddaughter is a student in second grade. So we are three generations in our household, and I'm a very involved grandparent volunteer with the PTA, and it's my honor to have served in many, many volunteer positions. I was recognized recently as the Mayor Carroll Stream Citizen of the Year for all my volunteer efforts, primarily with Evergreen School and Girl Scouts.
Thank you. Well, gentlemen, the first question, and I'll give you one second to think about it. Pretend you have now been tasked with creating a 30-second commercial to describe the culture of District 25. How would you describe it to a parent who's choosing where they would want to raise their children and have them go to school? I can see all of you thinking, thinking. Candidate Rogers, what would your 30-second commercial contain?
Benjamin District 25 is a community school of excellence. There's so many involved parents and community members in the school district, where it really is a home for many people. Generations have lived in Benjamin, and their parents have gone there, their students have gone there. So the district is in a very exciting time, where we have a lot of change. There's a lot of building development that's taking place. So I'm just so excited that our students get to see a refresh of their buildings and get to see that we're putting in as much effort as all of our teachers and parents are. So we're really trying to give the future generations a home that hopefully they can pass down to their children, too.
Thank you. Candidate Suttenbach, what would your commercials contain?
We've been told we are like a private school in the public sector. It's a very old-school district, probably one of the oldest in the state since 1844. We're not in any one town, so the schools, we have just two fiscal buildings, Benjamin and Evergreen, those schools are the community that encompasses Carroll Stream and West Chicago and a portion of Winfield and unincorporated Wayne Township and unincorporated Winfield. So it is a very family-oriented community.
Thank you. And Candidate Peterson, your 30-second spot to attract new parents?
Benjamin District is a very unique place. If you get in and start analyzing what goes on on a daily basis there, you're just, you can't speak highly enough about what happens in the schools and what happens in the rooms with the staff. And they're just, it's just marvelous. And I've talked to people who are homeschooling in the area and tried to convince them that they're wasting their money in doing what they're doing, because we would offer them every bit of what they're getting in the homeschool. But it's just, it's a wonderful, secret little place that people who would investigate enough would find out how special it is.
Thank you. Candidate Suttenbach, what do you see as the biggest challenge facing Benjamin District 25 right now, and how do you plan to address it if reelected?
Well, right now, we have to hire, we're in the midst of hiring, interviewing, hiring a superintendent. That's not up to me, that's up to the present board. So first and foremost, we need a new superintendent.
Thank you. Candidate Peterson?
Same answer.
And Candidate Rogers?
Yeah, very similarly. The board has got, you know, a large responsibility for selecting its new leader. We're really lucky that we have an interim superintendent, Mr. Langton, who's really helping the district progress its agenda forward and help our families out. So besides hiring a superintendent, the district has a large-scale construction initiative that needs to do. So that's renovating all of our classrooms, modernizing our facilities, selecting new technology for our classrooms. So there's a large undertaking that really, we have a lot of public trust in fiscally spending all taxpayer dollars. So it's a lot of getting stakeholder feedback to accomplish these tasks, but you know, there's a large undertaking that, you know, I think we're on the right track.
So Candidate Peterson, we'll start with you. What qualities and experience do you believe are essential for your next superintendent?
Well, I think the first thing that person needs to do is come into the district and set a year aside where that person would do nothing, would listen, and take in everything that, and everyone that that person would talk to. And after that year, before they do anything else in the district and change anything, they need to do that. They need to listen first, and hopefully they will hear the right things.
Thank you. Candidate Rogers, what qualities and experience do you believe are essential for your next superintendent?
Yeah, I think we need a superintendent that's a good communicator. We want to make sure all stakeholders are informed of what's going on in the buildings, in the classrooms, all the great things that's happening. So we really want somebody that can showcase Benjamin, as it's a small district that has a lot of wonderful things going on. So we just need a superintendent that can take and advance our curricular initiatives, can listen to our teachers on what's been going well, what we can improve upon. But really, it's listening to the historical, what's historically made Benjamin great, at the same time figuring out what is some modern teaching strategies that they can help bring and advance our teaching population.
And Candidate Suttenbach, what qualities and experience do you believe are essential for your next superintendent?
It's hard to add anything to that, but I can say this individual is going to have to wear a lot of hats. They're going to have to know about curriculum, they're going to have to be very personable with the students, teachers, staff, community, parents, grandparents. Be open and transparent.
So Candidate... What are the responsibilities of the board versus the superintendent then, and versus the principal, in terms of governance and day-to-day operations of the school building?
That's a great question. You know, really, the board's responsibility, I use the analogy of they need to be on the balcony, not on the dance floor. We need to put in a lot of time and effort to select the next leader of our district, and we need to give that leader the trust and respect to really advance the district's initiatives. So as the board, we need to support our administrative staff, our teaching staff, and support their goals and initiatives, because we're not in the classrooms every day teaching. We're here to support them.
Candidate Suttenbach? What are the responsibilities, in your opinion, of the board versus the superintendent versus the principal, in terms of governance and day-to-day operations of the school buildings?
Board hires the superintendent, and then the superintendent takes care of the rest. And the board sets policy for the superintendent, board sets, excuse me, set direction for the superintendent, and then he or she takes it from there.
Candidate Peterson, do you have anything to add to that?
I've always said that a superintendent can be much like a referee at a sports event, where he's got in his pocket the rules and policies, and he just kind of steps back and lets the players do what they do best. And if that happens, it usually turns out to be a pretty good game, and lots of good things happen.
So, starting with Candidate Suttenbach, how will you ensure the search process is transparent and inclusive of community input?
Oh, should it be?
How will you ensure that the search process is transparent and inclusive?
It already is. We've all been included. The search firm started, the executive search firm started when? February? It got going in February, and there's been online forums, there's been in-person forums. We were included as candidates to offer our opinions, so the search firm can build the profile. It's my understanding Monday, there's a special meeting with the board. It'll be a closed session, where the search firm will offer candidates that will fit the profile. And I think it's been tremendously transparent. The Benjamin District 25 website has a link that says Superintendent Search, so anyone in the community can log into that and view progress. It's been very transparent.
Candidate Peterson?
I don't think I can add anything more.
Okay, and Candidate Rogers?
We've done a good job of listening to the community on what they want, and they've been demanding more transparency. So as a board, we've tried to get ahead of that and do as much advertising on all our social media channels, when meetings are taking place, what the agendas are. No one should have to come to a board meeting to know what's going on in the district. So I like to think we've been doing a good job at advancing those initiatives on over-communicating to all of our parents and stakeholders, just so they know what our timeline is, and there should be no surprises in the search process.
Thank you. Candidate Peterson, what are the plans for the, your plans, to ensure that the school district continues to operate with a balanced budget while meeting the educational needs of the students?
That's a great, great observation and a great question. We've always been very sensitive to the financial status of Benjamin, and such that we were able to go into a bond sale this spring and sell $9 million worth of bonds to help finance the new buildings that are occurring. And because we were able to do that, we can do it also at a rate that doesn't affect the taxpayer. So we've always been very, very careful about how we've spent our money, and I think that's one of the things that I'm most proud of about Benjamin, is that we've been extremely frugal in many ways.
Candidate Rogers, same question.
This is what I do every day for my job. I manage a budget, around $15 million, very similar to what Benjamin is. And you know, we have two responsibilities as a board. We have responsibilities to our taxpayers, to make sure we're spending money in a fiscally conservative way, and we have responsibilities to our teaching staff, to make sure they have the resources they need. So you know, as a district, you really need to talk to your staff, and there's a bunch of different modes of communication you can use on making sure that they know that they're heard, their needs are realized, the budget's transparent, processes you're developing it throughout the year. But really, your teaching staff needs to know that you support them. It's a two-way street. Your district can only be as successful as your teachers, and your teachers can only be successful as the resources that you give them. So we try to do a very concentrated job at that, and that's something I'm proud of.
Candidate Suttenbach?
We have an excellent business manager, Dr. Joel Phelis, and we are a very financially sound district. Mr. Peterson mentioned about a $9 million bond. Well, that was to finance the school improvements, including building the six-room addition onto Evergreen, because our population is expanding. Older folks are moving out, and younger folks are moving in with families. So the board has, for the 45 years I've been in the district, been very proactive into noticing a trend and dealing with it before it's a problem.
Thank you. Candidate, as a follow-up, and a question that came in late this afternoon based on the national news. How or will the district be impacted if there is a disbandment of the Department of Education? And we'll start with Candidate Rogers.
Great question. You know, historically, around 14% of school districts' revenue is from federal funds. The district has got a very low, low, low-income population, so the title grant funds the districts would generally get if they're a low-income district is relatively low. The district also gets the Individual Disability Education Act, that's IDEA funds, to help support our special education population. And the district's really not in the National School Lunch Program, which is one of the other federal grants that could be impacted. So overall, the district shouldn't see, you know, a great level of interruption from a disbandment of federal funds that some other low-income districts might realize.
Candidate Suttenbach?
Yeah, just to add to that, I think we're considered a Tier Four, Tier Four-level school, and so there's, as Mr. Rogers says, it's very minimal impact to whatever they're doing in Washington. We don't get that many dollars from the state or the federal government. You know, our revenue comes in from the, basically residential. We don't have too much commercial, although we do have a couple of big items on North Avenue, the Amazon Company, and a new main freight trucking company that will help us. But by and large, it's the residents that are, through their tax dollars, paying for Benjamin District.
And Mr. Peterson, Candidate Peterson?
My understanding is that if the Department of Education somehow goes away, it's going to be left in the hands of the states, so that the states will then take over the control of education, and I think that's the direction I'm hearing from Washington.
Okay. Thank you. Well, since we're on the subject of taxes and funding of schools, real estate taxes are high in Illinois, and school taxes are a big part of our property taxes. What are your thoughts about consolidating Benjamin into one larger district that would serve all the students that feed Community High School District 94? And we'll start with Candidate Suttenbach.
It's been asked and answered several times, I think, over the 45 years I've been in the district, and it's been pretty much rejected by our community in Benjamin. You know, there's the two other feeder schools, Winfield 34 and West Chicago 33. When our eighth graders go into Community High School 94 in West Chicago, they really stand out. So the educational opportunities we've given them in Benjamin have made them excel when they get to West Chicago High. And we feel that if there were to be a consolidation, we would lose some of that quality. And we don't want to lose the quality for our kids in our community.
Candidate Peterson, your thoughts about consolidation?
I've been on the board long enough to go through at least three attempts at consolidation. And at the end of each of the attempts, it was proven and shown that there is no advantage for Benjamin, or Winfield, or West Chicago to combine in that. And in fact, it would be a disadvantage, because there's salaries that you have to deal with, and tenures you have to deal with, and there's just so many factors involved with this. So ultimately, the conclusion was that we're not interested in consolidation.
And Candidate Rogers?
Yeah, as a board member, that's nothing I would ever support, consolidation. I just don't think the economy's a scale that would be attained by maybe reducing some administrative costs that Benjamin might have. Wouldn't really be offset, I think, by consolidation, different salary structures that unit districts would have as well, that, yeah, I just don't think cost savings would be as realized as you might anticipate. So you know, as board members, we really just have to show our public that they're tax dollars. Again, taxes are very high all around the board. Show that we're spending in the most conservative way possible, and really just have to be transparent with those efforts. But that's what makes Benjamin great, is we have a lot of latitude to make educational decisions ourself.
Thank you. This question will start with Candidate Peterson. So, and the question is this. Can the school, can the district do better to support and engage with underrepresented communities, including students of different racial, cultural, or socioeconomic backgrounds?
Could the district do better? Well, I think the answer is yes. The district can always, always do better. As to how that better is, I guess we're going to have to leave that up to the administration and to propose programs and plans that would involve the minorities, people in the district. But I think we do a fairly...
Somebody put it on the top. Here we go. Your answer caused the lights to go out.
Wow. I didn't have that much power.
Everyone was just so, waited on bated breath for answers.
Anyway, I think, I think what we do is, we do address this. Could we, could we address it better and a little more differently? Yes, I guess so.
Thank you. Candidate Rogers, what are your thoughts? And hope the lights stay on for the answer.
Yeah, we could always do a better job, but I think we do, as a board, we've done a good job at supporting our district administrative direction. We've got a great director of student services. We've recently hired an administrative assistant for that position, just to help better support them. So they're not focused as much on the day-to-day, you know, paperwork issues that have to arise for those positions, but they can go and directly work with our most needy population. So as community shifts, we get a lot of new students that might come in. We need to make sure we have the resources available to support them.
And Candidate Suttenbach, same question?
We do a darn good job now, I think. Now, let's just point out that the census of the schools is probably two-thirds, one-third. Two-thirds are traditionally white Caucasian, and one-third is not. We have Hispanic students, we have Polish students, we have up to, what is it, Eric, 26 different languages spoken at home. So we are a diverse, cosmopolitan community that I think, and everybody's accepted, everybody is treated equally, everybody is elevated equally. We work together to make sure every student is fully supported.
Thank you. Candidate Rogers? Another subject that's been in the news a lot lately is cell phones in the classroom. Do you support or oppose a ban on cell phones in the classroom? And what is your reasoning behind your position?
Wholeheartedly, I support a ban of cell phones. We've just recently done it in the district I work in, and there's these tools that you can utilize, you know, for middle school students, where they store their devices for the day. And it's just been amazing to see students talking again. It's, everything is done, technology's integrated in every classroom, you spend a lot of time behind your computer. When you take those devices away, they put them away for the day, they get them when they're done, and you don't even see them looking at them when they get the phones back. They're just so engaged with their friends. So it's really been enlightening to see the effect. Lot of bumps in the road to get it going on initially, but you know, I think our student population's started embracing that as well. So I think Benjamin, you know, could do the same.
Candidate Suttenbach?
I think if it's a problem, maybe we have to address it, but I don't know that it's a problem at Benjamin right now. As Eric says, all of our students have laptops that they work on during the day, except for kindergarten, I think they have like iPads. But there is enough technology already in the school during the day. I don't know where they'd find time to have a cell phone.
Candidate Peterson, would you support or oppose a ban on cell phones in classrooms, and what is your reasoning behind your position?
I would oppose it, and the biggest challenge, I think, is to communicate with the parents who...
I'm so sorry.
With the parents who feel like they have to be instantly in communication with their students, where the reality is, they don't need to be instantly in touch with their students. And as soon as they learn that lesson... And as soon as they learn that, that lesson, that vital lesson, and I think Eric was talking about that, once that gets set, then we will have greater acceptance of the, no, no cell phones in the classroom.
Thank you. Candidate Suttenbach.
Yes, ma'am.
What criteria should be used to determine the selection and the removal of materials in school libraries to ensure that appropriate, educational, and that they're all beneficial for students?
I hadn't thought about that. Again, if it was a problem, I guess we'd have to address it as a board. I don't know that that's a problem right now. I think we have excellent learning center people right now that know what's appropriate, and I've not heard that that's a problem in the two years I've been going to board meetings. I don't think it's ever come up that...
Until now.
I'm, I'm, I'm the first.
You're the first.
That's good.
Candidate Peterson, do you have anything?
Said what, country?
Pardon me?
What was your question again?
The question was, what criteria should be used to determine the selection and removal of materials in school, in the school libraries to ensure that they're appropriate, educational, and beneficial for students?
Well, I'm guessing right now we have a, a committee that will take a look at some of the reading materials that are available to the students. And if there is something that's inappropriate, it'll get flagged and then discussed, brought forward. And if it's inappropriate, it gets eliminated. But as far as what criteria do we use, common sense, I think.
A unique concept.
Yeah.
Candidate Rogers, your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm generally against anything being, be made unavailable or removed, you know, for individuals, you know, for individual reasons, because everything's a teaching tool. Obviously, there's not, every book is not age-appropriate, or the material may be too mature for some students. But there's always opportunities to, you know, to further educate, you know, about the different materials that are available. But yeah, I don't think this has been an issue. We'd always listen to the parents and teachers on what resources, you know, they might not find, you know, appropriate for certain subsections of kids. So just like we ask about teaching, you know, sex education and things like that in class, parents have a choice in these matters.
Thank you. So one of the other major problems facing education that we hear in the news is the retention and the recruitment of teachers at this day and age. So what strategies are you all using to recruit and retain high-quality teachers for the district? And we'll begin with candidate Peterson.
That's easy for us. We have very little turnover for us because we value the teachers that we have, and we let them know how much we value them. And if there is an issue that can't, needs to be resolved, it can very easily go up the chain of command and that. And that's one of the reasons why we go, when we go into negotiations with the teachers for contracts, we're able to negotiate five-year contracts within four meetings. And that's because the teachers have had this wonderful trust with the board. And, you know, it doesn't, it just doesn't get any better than that. And we, we hope that, that continues.
Thank you. Candidate Rogers, what strategies are being used to recruit and retain high-quality teachers for the district?
Teacher retention issue is a pretty big issue all around the state, but thankfully, Benjamin hasn't been hit too hard by that. And as a board, we really have a very limited responsibility, you know, for teacher retention. We need to make sure salaries are competitive, benefits are competitive. That's for the board, to make sure we have, you know, to support during the, the teachers have our support during the negotiations, to make sure regionally we're able to retain and attain the best teaching staff. You know, but otherwise, we need to do a good job on, when teachers are hired or exit interviews, on really what they view, why they may be leaving the district. So I just think it's important just to get that continuous feedback, because without feedback, we can't approve anything.
And candidate Suttenbach.
Benjamin District sells itself. We have many teachers who are students. Got that award, I think, six times over the last eight years. It may have been suspended during the pandemic, but we get constant feedback that the teachers love the district. So it spreads by word of mouth. Come, come work for us. Come stay. They love it.
Well, I hope future teachers are watching this. So one, one, another question, as the topic amongst many in various communities throughout the state, is transparency and communication. So what grade would you give Benjamin District Twenty-five for its transparency and communication between the school board, parents, teachers, and community? And why would you give it that grade? And we will begin with candidate Suttenbach.
An A-, because nobody's perfect all the time. There's always room for improvement. It's, it's, it's really improved tremendously since our interim superintendent, John Langdon, who is in the audience here tonight, has, has been on board. Public has asked for like a summary of board meetings, for example, you know, the day after, or at least by the end of the week when that board meeting was held. And John came up with board briefs that are now posted online as well. I think it's posted in the newsletter, or maybe even a separate email. So email communications are more. We certainly have more meetings this year than we used to. All board members are available for questions and answers, you know, and I think, I think there's been a tremendous improvement. So I'll give it an A-, because you can always improve.
Okay. Candidate Peterson, what grade would you give the district for communications between the school board, parents, teachers, and the community? And why would you give that grade?
I think I'm gonna fall into the same basket that Mr. Suttenbach just, just proclaimed an A-. I think the district does the best that it can to make sure that all voices are heard when decisions are made, and all voices are heard so that when we embark on a new project, like, like the building project we're in the middle of right now, that every facet of, of the community has had some opportunity to express themselves. And I think, my fifteen seconds is going fast. Anyway, and why do I think that? I, I, I just, I'm hearing good, good things from, from people as I move around the district.
Great. Candidate Rogers, what's your grade? Why?
I think they both brought up great points. I, you know, I think we were, we've discovered that we were not communicating as effectively as we can. We're really lucky Mr. Langdon's here. That's made all of our board documents public. We're looking to televise our board meetings more, are televising for the community members that can't make it. I'd say the only thing that would, we need to look to improve as a district is having concise communication from all the schools. There's a lot of different modes of communication that can be utilized in a district. We gotta just do a little bit of research, I think, on unifying those modes of communication so parents don't have to have apps, you know, all over the place. Doing a great job, though. I'd say A-, as well.
Great. You all are on the honor roll. So this is going to be your last question. So you all were thinking about tonight's event and coming and wondering what questions we were going to ask you. So my question is this. What question did you think I was going to ask that I haven't asked? And how would you answer that question? And we'll begin with candidate Peterson.
Sure. There's been a lot of discussion lately about wokeness in the schools and that. And one of the things, that and the, the other areas of, of concern as far as equity and diversity and that, and I just wanted to make sure that our school covers, covers the grounds so that we don't need to go to wokeness and all these, these other issues to get an education for our kids. Because when I, when I went back and I had my education many years ago, oh, it doesn't like wokeness.
Every time.
Anyway.
It's you.
Yeah, anyway.
Like a higher power is...
Sure. So that's one of, that's one of the things I, I thought you, you might, you might touch on.
So candidate Rogers, what question did you think I was going to ask that I didn't ask? And how would you answer it?
I guess that's a, that's a great question. You know, the, the district's been going through a large transition with its superintendent leaving mid-year, and the board has been doing kind of a strategic alignment that's brought about a lot of emotions and, and feeling from our community. So, you know, I would say if somebody from our community with more, you know, nuanced knowledge of that, you know, was going to ask about, you know, what is the board doing to just progress itself as a governing body? I think we're doing a great job at just understanding where the district has been, where it needs to go, and we're just doing a good job of, of listening. If anything, we can just sit there and, need to have a host of more forums for families and teachers to give genuine dialogue with the, with the school board. So at a meeting, it's, it's a very functional and formal event. So informal opportunities to solicit feedback, I think, is always something the district and the board needs to strive to do.
And candidate Suttenbach, what question did you think I was going to ask that I didn't ask? And how would you answer it?
Ask them all. You did. You did. What a guy.
Great. Thank you so much. It's time for our closing statements. So we'll begin with candidate Rogers. You have one minute for your closing statement.
Minute went pretty quick last time, so...
Well, I'll extend it even to a minute thirty seconds.
No, I don't need that much. You know, you know, I've spent my whole life as a, as a public servant. I've been in schools for fifteen years. I've been in administration for ten. That's all I've ever done. I've worked as a maintenance crew in summer. I've worked in every operation in the business department. So my whole purpose is to be a public servant, and the school board's just been an extension of that. I really want to see my, I have a first grader and a, and a eighteen-month-old. I want to have, have them have the same experience that I did growing up. And Benjamin is such a close-knit community that I just feel at home here. And so any way I can do to serve the public is something that really I am passionate about. I'm a lifelong learner. I'm going to get my doctorate right now and superintendent endorsement. So I'm constantly striving to better myself. I want to do what I can to help better Benjamin.
Thank you. Candidate Suttenbach, your one-minute, thirty-second closing statement.
Nickname me Papa Don. So it's actually, I asked for your vote, parent, not the kids, but the parents. It's actually listed as Donald Papa Don Suttenbach. I want to say we have two great schools in Benjamin and Evergreen, and I intend to keep them great. We have great teachers, the best staff, and excellent students. This will be my first term at, as a member of the Board of Education, but I'm not unfamiliar to public service. I've served over twenty years, about twenty years, in the Village Carroll Street as a village clerk, village trustee, and as the chairman of the planning commission, Sony Board of Appeals. Right now, I'm volunteering a lot at the school. This is how, this is what I do. This is what I do. I love to volunteer and get back to the community. I'm open, transparent. I'm accountable. I'm fiscally responsible. And above all, I represent everyone in our district. Parents, like I said, parents, grandparents, teachers, staff, neighbors, and above all, our children. Thank you very much. Please vote for me.
Thank you. And candidate Peterson, your one-minute, thirty-second closing statement.
Thank you. I was hoping that I could communicate that the years I've spent being a board member has taught me some things that I could still pass along to future board members. So I guess one of the things that I'd like to, to, to do is to help them, help the new board members become more knowledgeable on what it's like to be a board member. And the other issue is with the search for the superintendent. This is such an important decision to make that I think it would be important that some, some of my thoughts might, might be helpful in leading to that correct decision. So in, in essence, thank you for this opportunity, for, for being here, and on to the election, I guess.
On behalf of the community, please join me in thanking them for being here with us tonight. Our democracy thrives when all of us are engaged. Attending or watching a candidate forum is an excellent way to be empowered to join discussions on local issues and make your voice heard on Election Day. We hope that each and every one of you will vote and inspire your family, friends, and neighbors to do the same. Information on how and when to vote can be found at vote411.org and the League of Women Voters of Wheaton website and social media. We hope that you will take advantage of early voting, which starts on March, started on March seventeenth. Since Election Day, April first falls during spring break. Recording of this forum can be found on the League of Women Voters of Wheaton website. And to the candidates, thank you so much for your attending tonight, and best of luck on the campaign trail. Good night.